It's seven o'clock. Northwest Public.
I'm really impressed at how you captured that.
(laughing).
I came in here to say that.
How about, when we get to the minutes, we can thank you then. Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, September 24th, 2014 meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from September 10th.
I move to approve.
We move to approve with thanks to Ann for the quality of the work.
Second.
Is there a second to that? All right. Other comments, corrections, scrivners? Here in the hall. All in favor of approving the minutes of September 10th? Say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Extentions. Jim, thank you. All right. Rebecca. Next up, correspondence. Anything from staff?
The only thing I was going to have was covering the announcement you have there, so we'd like to cover that. That'd be great.
All right. Great. I have two things. The first is a thank you. Our next set of readings is online. Again, go to the commission page, lower right, you'll find a link to the historic list of readings, and the top ones are marked, I believe they're marked September. And there are three, and they are all connected to water. Kind of both, we've had this conversation of it in the past, and the 16th of this month is the Water Summit, and so it just seemed like kind of a nice idea to put water in the topic of our readings. And hopefully that, I don't know if we'll be able to discuss them in two weeks. That would maybe be nice, but more likely, it depends on what you think the agenda is, Bill.
We should have time.
Should have time. Okay. Let's try for that and see if that's possible.
A few of the items are actually rather large, so we have the last, which I think is the 2012 Annual Water Report from PIBAC. The second item is the Phase Two Surface Water Reservoir Study. That's a fairly long document. And then the final item was an article about direct reuse that a city in Texas is contemplating due to the scarcity of water that they're facing right now. So those were the three items that were posted there. But the first two, the PIBAC Annual Water Report, for those who've looked at it in the past, has a lot of charts and graphs and information. The Surface Water Reservoir Study is a little bit lengthy, but you can certainly skim the summary of that document.
Summary, look at the pictures. And the second one is something that I thought a number of you would be interested in. It's coming up on October 6th, sponsored by the Moscow Arts Commission. It's a workshop on placemaking. I don't know if the camera can get anything of that or not. And there are several things. One is in the afternoon from 1:00 to 4:00 here in council chambers. Then there's a dinner, a no-host dinner down at Myalina, and then a panel in the evening, 6:30 to 7:30 in the Kenworthy. Anyway, it looked interesting. And then after that, in the Kenworthy, are some movie shorts about place and placemaking. So I'll pass this around. You can put it in your calendar if it looks interesting. They ask that you RSVP, and that information is at the bottom center of this document if you're interested in RSVPing and attending. I think probably it's mostly about planning for the dinner, but I'm not sure what other logistics they may want RSVPing for.
It might be a nice just to mention that I believe they're bringing in Ms. Bab from Boise, who's an activist in art, public art. So that goes along with this, is the Arts Commission that's sponsoring this, and she's quite a, they've done some really intriguing public art in downtown Boise that's worked. So I think it'll be fun to have her here. We could do some things in our alleys, and they've done some funky things in Boise that are not just a normal sculpture on the sidewalk. So I think it'd be fun to share with her.
Right. So they sent, I got two of those for two commissions, where they send them to pretty much everywhere. Who's the audience that they're trying to target, you know? Besides commission members?
I really don't know.
I figured that's why I got two, but I don't know for sure.
Yeah. I think it's being broadcast fairly wide. I think they're looking for just community involvement, engagement in the process.
Right. Our planning and zoning slant on placemaking might be a little different, but I think that the idea of making art that makes the community richer. In fact, Gregory and I were looking at some of the paintings out of the wall, and there's an alley. It's been painted multiple times. You'll recognize it, it's over by the police station. I said, "How could we make more alleys like that?" It's popular. Okay. Other items for correspondence. Joel, Transportation Commission.
The Transportation Commission did not meet in September. Its next scheduled meeting is the 9th of October, the day after our meeting, and I have not yet seen an agenda for that.
Do we know, either of you, where the consultant's transportation plan is?
I believe it's being presented to the council on October 6th.
Uh-huh. Okay. So it's finally made its way forward. So it's been through committee already?
It hasn't gone to committee, to my knowledge. I think there've been reports to committee at various stages, but I don't, it was not a topic of discussion. I believe they're probably taking it to just the full council presentation, but the last agenda I saw, I think it was on the October 6th agenda.
Uh-huh. Okay. Thank you. All right. We have reached the open microphone portion of our agenda. Members of the public may come forward and speak to the commission on matters not on our agenda or currently pending before Planning and Zoning Commission. Please state your name and address for the record, and limit your remarks to three minutes. We need to find a chair. How about right here, next to Gregory?
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Kristin Koenig, and my address is 113 South Almond Street. And I've come to the commission to inform you about my concerns regarding Wander's Tavern. The tavern has recently moved from Washington Street to my neighborhood, and is now located at Almond and Third Streets. I've owned my home in this really quiet neighborhood for a number of years. It was quiet until the tavern started having outdoor concerts in their parking lot. And I've been connecting with city staff and officials since the beginning of June, when I notified all of the city council members of my concern. I've so far connected with 12 individuals from the city about this issue, and my concerns are as follows. One, it is an ice shore, there's piles of rocks and chairs which have been there for months. Two, the fence is a safety hazard and is not structurally sound. Part of the fence has already fallen down in a couple of places. Three, there are a number of young children in the neighborhood, and many that live in the apartment complex, which is one building over from the bar. Four, Almond is a one-way street, and we already have a lot of people driving the wrong way, and I'm concerned about the influx of people driving on Almond who may be inebriated and not know it is a one-way street, so this is a major safety issue. My primary concern, though, is the noise from the amplified outdoor concerts they are holding in their parking lot. My understanding is that they plan on having outdoor concerts on a regular basis. So far, there have been concerts on September 6th and 13th. I contacted the police, and they were dispatched on both nights. The individuals at Wander's Tavern did not know about the noise exemption permit request, and the officer had to tell them about it at my request. The dispatched officer was aware that they were playing music after 10:00 p.m. and acknowledged that it was a nuisance and disturbing the peace. However, they did not get a citation either time. I actually found out since those incidents that the amplified sound permits are actually only valid until 9:00 p.m. and not 10:00 p.m., so they were playing well past an hour after they should have stopped. I'd like to refer the City Code because they are clearly in violation of it. The tavern is located in the central business zone, which is right next to residential housing. Title IV, Section 3.5 E2 states, "Operations conducted on the premises shall not constitute a nuisance beyond the property lines by reasons of smoke, fume, odor, steam, gases, vibration, noise, hazards, or other causes." Title 10 in the police regulations, Section 11.2 describes the public nuisance noises that are prohibited. And the regulation states, "It shall be unlawful for any person within the city to knowingly make, continue, or cause to be made, or to knowingly allow to be made, or to continue any noise as defined in the chapter." Part A covers loudspeakers, radios, phonographs, and amplifiers. The provision states, "The use, operation, or permitting of any radio-receiving set, musical instrument, phonograph, loudspeaker, sound amplifier, or other machine or device for the production or reproduction of sound in such a manner as to disturb the peace, quiet, or comfort of another person. Such sound made at a louder volume than is necessary for convenient hearing for the person or persons who are in the room, chamber, vehicle, or space where such a device is being operated shall be prima facia evidence of violation of this code section." So I want to be proactive with this issue before it gets completely out of hand. The questions I have are, is there an approval process for the business to go through in order to be approved to hold recurring outdoor concerts besides the noise exemption permit request, which is for a one-time event? And if there is not, I would like to suggest that a process be put into place. Another question is, what are the policies and procedures for this type of business that's having these outdoor concerts? And what can be done to mitigate the impact on the residents and the children who live in the same neighborhood as the bar? So those are my questions for the commission, and things I'd like you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Stay here a second. Bill, can you help me understand to what extent there are pieces of Kristin's concern that are within the purview of P&amp;Z as opposed to in other portions of City Code?
So within the central business district, there is no limitation, as appears in some other districts, that all the activities have to occur within an entirely enclosed building. So, I mean, eating and drinking establishment is allowed use by right in the central business district. So you can have a bar, you can have a dance club, you can have that type of activity. The zoning code does not speak to those activities happening inside the building versus outside the building, so there's really no distinction in the zoning code, the uses, the uses permitted in the district. The language about the activities not creating a nuisance beyond the property boundaries is a fairly general, fairly general language is found in multiple districts. And in this case, where the issue is noise, then the city would rely upon the city's noise ordinance as being the specific guidance about the, what is allowable noise to occur. And so that is really the enforcement mechanism the city has. If they multiply, you know, if they continue to violate the noise ordinance, it would be much easier for us to prosecute that versus through the police regulations underneath Title 10 than as a land use violation. I think the only way we could really take, and this really is not necessarily a good venue to talk about a specific code enforcement issue, so I guess I'll talk kind of in broad terms. But the central business district really, as I mentioned, does not regulate the individual uses or discriminate based upon the uses happening inside a building or outside. And if the concern is related to noise, then the city's noise ordinance would be the ordinance that would control. I guess beyond that, I don't want to get into more specific.
C.D. goes how far down there? Remind me again?
The central business goes to the alley just beyond Wander's.
Oh, I thought.
And then just to the west of that, it transitions to the motor business district.
Okay. Okay. So, right, there's the specifics of this concern, and then there's the larger sort of planning question. And I think to Nels's observation, the question is, what happens when zones abut? I presume further up Almond Street, it's R4.
Correct.
And so we have a residential use abutting the central business use.
That's correct.
Which can accommodate all sorts of things, from mortuaries, as we've discussed, to bars with outside paddies.
Restaurants, bars, paddies, correct.
And so it's, and we can't know in advance.
Right.
When we zone a piece of ground, we just said the possibility is of this unfolding.
Right.
So that, unless there's some way that we were able to be thinking about what does it mean to be a transitional zone, but R4 is our most dense urban residential.
High potentially residential district.
Correct.
When did this place, when did it open?
It actually hasn't opened, and they're holding outdoor concerts there, and they don't even have an occupancy permit per our discussion a couple days ago.
Right. They have not opened the facility, and I don't know the facts of who was there. If it was just their friends, they're hanging out, playing music, that's something actually that we probably even wouldn't regulate as a commercial activity on the property. If it was an event that they were charging cover for, then that's, they're starting to engage in use on the property, and that's something that we have had contact with the individual. We are talking about the permits that are necessary in part, and they are moving in that direction, so.
So what does the occupancy permit, is that required for an outside use?
It is not.
Same as an inside use?
Well, I guess, if you're going to have a outdoor activity that was commercial in nature, and you're inviting the public to come attend, then you need to provide restroom facilities at least. And I think that's where the sanitary facilities would be the question. Under the building code, we really look at occupancy of the structure itself and what's required for that, not just for outdoor areas. And so they could conduct that activity, but we would want to make sure that there were sanitary facilities that were available. Which brings in the connection to the occupancy of the structure. And I presume the weather is only going to accommodate outdoor activities for so long before they're going to need to move into the building, but it's going to be a change of occupancy with certain requirements on the structure before they can do that.
So there is no occupancy permit required for an outside use, except as would relate to sanitary facilities, which could be accommodated by a porta potty, I assume.
Possibly, and we have done that in occasions. When the theater group were doing plays in the silos, they brought in temporary bathroom facilities as porta potties to accommodate that event. When we do downtown, you know, events, downtown concerts, that similar activity oftentimes occurs, so for events of that nature, you could provide those facilities in that way.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Have you, have you talked to the mayor?
I have not yet done that, but that is on my list.
I would imagine that if you were to bring this to the administrative committee, would probably be a more direct route. I don't know whether the answers will be any different, but the, going to the administrative committee can then go directly to the city council, whereas coming to a commission meeting goes from the commission meeting to the administrative or the public works finance, and then to the council.
And I'm planning on going to city council next.
Yeah, it's supposed to be the public comment period of the city council.
Right. Yeah, that's on my calendar.
You get no feedback from the police department about the violation of the noise ordinance?
No, they, I mean, the officer said he acknowledged that it was a public nuisance and that they were disturbing the peace, but they have discretion in what they decide to do, if they choose to issue a warning or a citation, and nothing was issued either time. And so I'm on the phone with the officer after 10:00, and it's still going on, and they're not doing anything about it.
We get shut down at Ronnie Wood in the Park at 10:01.
Yeah, they told me that people just need to call in and make complaints, and that's how they get a record. But it's just frustrating when you're trying to go to sleep and you can't.
Is talking to the chief on your list?
It is. I've actually spoken with one of the lieutenants. The chief has been out of town, so I think he gets back tomorrow. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Number six, continued review of the proposed amendment Title IV, Chapter 6, Moscow City Code, to allow, exception of street frontage requirements on existing lots of record. You will recall this item on our meeting of two weeks ago, and at that time, the commission chose to table it. I think procedurally, what I need is a motion to hear the staff report. You'll recall, we requested the staff to update us on a few things. Staff report on the questions from last week, and to resume our deliberations on this matter.
And to be clear, to remove it from the table.
To remove it from the table.
For the deliberation.
For the purpose of hearing staff report and resuming deliberations.
So moved.
Moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Else, thank you. All in favor of removing from the table and hearing this and continuing to deliberate? Say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Extentions. All right. Bill, can you update us on the two, I think it was two things that we asked of you last time?
Yeah, the one specific item, and just had a very brief one, paragraph null, but I know there was a question about, of the 36 lots that were identified that were on a substandard right-of-way width, if we could identify how many were occupied by something other than single-family dwelling. So we had 36 lots in total. Thirty of those were occupied by single-family dwellings. Four of those were occupied by two-family dwellings. And I need to actually back that up. There'd be 28 that were occupied by single-family dwelling. There are two that are vacant, as you may remember.
They're members, too.
So there are 28 that were occupied by single-family, four that were two-family, and two that are actually commercially zoned. Those are one of the ones kind of behind the old Moscow Building Supply and north of Morgan Street, that there's a narrow alley that goes up in dead ends at those two properties. One is, they're both zoned commercial, one has a residential use on it, one has a commercial activity happening on it. So there are two, two properties there that are zoned commercially. So that, those were our findings. So we, you know, we do have four of the 36 that do currently are occupied by two-family dwellings, and those are primarily on the Hidden Lane. So there's three duplexes on Hidden Lane. The fourth duplex was located off the Deacon Extension, which is kind of a private shared driveway that's called Deacon Extension. So one duplex resides there, and the three others reside on Hidden Lane. So that was the conclusion of that research.
Questions for Bill regarding, I think that our interest was to understand the uniformity or heterogeneity, I suppose, of the lots in question as we were thinking about.
Have you, in working with the city council, I mean, is this issue of legality, anything at all that you're concerned about?
Legality in what sense?
Well, what was the lawyer doing at our meeting?
So, like, the lawyer was representing individuals that obviously had retained them.
And he seemed to indicate that we were doing something illegal, and I was having a really hard time following the line of reasoning.
Staff has no concern about any of the legal discussion or challenges that were brought forth at the last meeting. The city attorney has had time to fully review those, and we do not feel that this is in any way, any violation of code. I think there is a desire for this issue to be addressed in a different manner. And as I think I mentioned last meeting, there were three, probably three different ways that this could be addressed, depending upon what the desired outcome is. You know, what do we want to have at the end of the day? How do we want to address these 36 lots that currently the code may say can't be reconstructed or can't be developed because they don't abut a fully-developed public street? And, and those were what was suggested and prepared by the city attorney and presented to the commission on the evening under consideration. There is the option that we could look at the conditional use permit process, but then there's this whole process of distinguishing between some lots that do have structures on it and those that do not, and do you want to, how is that going to be, is that universally applied to everybody and place it in that situation? That certainly is a process that's being advocated by the attorneys representing those individuals. And, you know, the final option was the same that was being proposed by staff, by just putting it into a different location under the nonconforming lots of record, you know, but essentially it would all have the same outcome, all have the same effect. And those are all three, I think, equally valid ways you approach it, and they all have different nuances to them. But there is no concern from the city attorney's office or our office that we can't amend the code as is being proposed to address an unintended consequence of a code amendment that was implemented, you know, 30 years ago. And so there's no concern in our, in our view regarding the approach, as long as the commission is comfortable with the outcome, and this is an outcome that you think is appropriate, then this approach and as it was suggested is sound.
Well, Ron Landak kept referring to the 2012 amendment to the Idaho Code. And that was a little bit of a question.
And that's, if I could just, for you, again, a little background, that was where communities in the past had been allowing height exceedances or had been allowing what, reductions of setbacks as a conditional use permit process. And prior to 2012, the only section of the state code that directly addressed the bulk and dimensional setback standards was a variance. Your only specifically authorized authority to grant a waiver to those was in the various process. In 2012, they amended that to give cities that authority to be able to grant those waivers through a special use permit, conditional use permit, which is the same thing. That does not preclude your ability to legislatively change what your standards are or to accept out others legislatively. They would prefer that approach because then the property owner would be required to go through a public hearing process and to have public input rather than just having it as a use by right, is what I presume.
They, in that sense, was...
The attorney that was advocating that the city should take that approach, I believe he must, was representing his, their client's position, that they would prefer that be the mechanism that's utilized. But that's an additional grant of authority, that is not the only way that that can be done. You know, legislatively, standards can be changed at any point in time when we do it on a regular basis. And so there's nothing that precludes us, the city, from amending a standard to address an unintended consequence of a code change that happened that affected these properties in this manner, and not require them to go through a conditional use permit process to do that. You can just legislatively change the standard to accommodate that. And so that is the, you know, the approach that they're advocating, and that certainly is the approach that the commission, if you wish, can be explored, but we don't, that's not the position the staff was recommending or the mechanism the staff was recommending. It is, it is a possible way of doing it, but we didn't feel that this, that conditional use permit was necessary.
And the reasoning, if I understood, was that the conditional use permit would then apply to all of these, including the 28 single-family, the four duplex, and the two commercial.
Correct.
And they would therefore not be able to get a letter to a lender from the city that says it could be rebuilt. And so potentially, all of them are in a position of being lost in time where that may not be our intention.
Correct. You know, providing for a means to waive a standard through the conditional use permit does not all of a sudden then make them in a conforming status. So they're at a legal nonconforming status, they're legally conforming prior to the code amendment in '91. At that point in time, they became nonconforming uses, and saying that you could waive that frontage requirement through a conditional use permit does not place them into a conforming status until such time as that conditional use permit is granted. If the city's going to be in a position of never denying that because we don't want to end up in a regulatory takings position, then why not do it legislatively, then, then conditional use permit process? You know, that's staff, that's why staff is recommending that they should be addressed in this fashion. And then the question is whether a undeveloped lot versus a developed lot should be treated differently. And they can be, but, you know, we generally believe... And they can be, but, you know, we generally believe as staff that equally, you know, similarly situated properties should be treated equally, or there should be some very specific reason about why you are treating them in a disproportionate manner. There's a, there's a public reason, a public purpose to be served in doing that. Outside of that, I think all similarly situated properties should have the same and similar property rights and abilities to use and, you know, the beneficial use of their property in accordance to what's allowed in that district under the code. And so, that would be staff's recommendations, not make a distinction. I know they were advocating for that to be the case.
Further questions?
Do you need direction? Are you going to independently take the next step, or do we need to say?
Well, it's not before, no, the, no action's been taken by the commission, so the commission has to take a vote on a recommendation for the council. So it is, it is in the commission's court at this point in time, and...
And we have a draft language from staff that was the subject of our public hearing.
Correct. The ordinance that was presented is still the ordinance under consideration today. Until you give me further direction that you wish to see it amended and re-noticed and reheard in a different form, then, then that's another avenue.
Of course, I personally like to hear from my colleagues here. I was thinking that staff's approach was appropriate, and I so voted, so I haven't changed my mind since then, but I'd be happy to hear other views a little bit more, if you want to articulate those.
I was, I expressed my apprehensions that, at that, at the public hearing, that the proposal that was before us at that point would allow some expansions of use, perhaps moving from a single-family to duplexes or, you know, other, other types of expansion. Two weeks later now, in thinking about the possible consequences of going the traditional use route, I'm, would be very uncomfortable, I guess, to do that. I, I guess, sort of on balance, I will, so, hold my breath, and I guess I'm willing to, at this point, make the motion to, to approve the, the draft as it was before us two weeks ago. I'm not totally comfortable with it, but that's, seems to me the best route.
But what would the, I mean, in any condition where you have a lot that's in a particular zone, and as of right you can do whatever the zone allows, that's what we do in the city, don't we?
Yeah, the thing, the thing that is unique about these lots is that they do not have what we generally consider to be adequate access, and thus an expansion of use could potentially be a problem, not necessarily, but could potentially be. That's what I'm worried about.
So that's, that's kind of the problem that, that I see is, just because the land is zoned appropriately, somebody gets to put in and put a, a four-unit building on a lot that's only accessible via a small private drive, you know, and, and I don't know if I'm seeing more problem than there would really be there, but it, it just generally doesn't sound like a good idea to me. I mean, I mean, that's the thing that makes me uncomfortable, is the idea that we're, we're okaying anything that's available to somebody by right in their certain zoning area without looking at all at what kind of access they have to it. So like I say, that's the worst possible case. I can see is a, is a ten-foot private driveway that four families are trying to get down, let alone the fire truck.
But a lot would have to happen in order to get to that point. There'd have to be, for some reason, the, the existing use would have to come down, and then somebody would want to...
Two vacant lots.
Have to, well, that are, I don't know what the zoning is in the...
Two families.
So...
Yeah, so duplexes.
Yeah. But, but that, there's building codes and other codes, I assume, that address some of those kind of things, like adequate access and...
Right, I mean, it's, it's, they'd have to have the fire lane, so they're going to have twenty feet of fire access, which is going to be, which is, I guess, in our view, equivalent of a flagpole lot that's only required to have twenty feet, but the flagpole can be a hundred and fifty feet long, and you can then put your duplexes there.
Yeah.
So I guess it's, it's hard for us to draw a significant distinction between this case where there is, you know, you, you can have a twenty-foot wide flagpole, if it's just a private drive, the driveway itself only has to be twelve feet wide underneath the fire code. In this instance, not to talk, you know, but we've got a variety of conditions, but one condition is it's a twenty-foot wide platted alley that is maintained and by the public and plowed and so forth for access to the site. And to say that that can't develop in a, in a fashion that a flagpole lot that had a twelve-foot wide driveway legally could, you know, I think is a, is a difficult position to...
Yeah. So under current code, it would be fine to put a duplex at the end of your twelve-foot wide flagpole lot if it was zoned appropriately for that?
Yes, if you had a flagpole lot and the flagpole was twenty feet, but the driveway standard is only twelve feet, I believe, that is adequate access for fire to, to the lot.
I would be a poster child for doing something like that. My flagpole is only about a hundred feet long, but it is a narrow, gravelled drive, and I'm in the process of building a passing lane so the ambulance can pass the fire truck. I get out of the flagpole and things widen out a little bit, and, you know, I, that became a negotiation with the fire marshal at the time that I set out to get the building permit for the project.
Yeah. So I guess I would say, does anybody else see any distinction between a flagpole lot and a private alley?
Yeah, I have a hard time seeing that. It seems to me like it, I mean, he has one of those examples of occasionally, especially in history, in a city that has some unusual ups and downs and hills, we do get an occasional, it doesn't happen much now because we, our engineers are really pretty savvy these days, but a few years ago, it was easier to get one of these, and sometimes they become a kind of exotic thing like our chairman has, and sometime, I don't know what the future is for it, but it doesn't seem like a giant misstatement of either purpose or power.
The opposition from the way it was constructed to begin with has mostly to do with people who live in structures currently on these type of lots, and they're concerned that if it burnt down or was damaged in some way, they could not rebuild it, and that affects their property value, is that right?
If, if there's a property that's nonconforming, then it, it does affect the property value. Generally, you cannot get, if a bank is aware of the status, you may not be able to get financing because if the structure cannot be reconstructed, if it's destroyed, then the asset cannot be rebuilt, and so it does end up, in many instances, it ends up as a, as a cash sale, which reduces the value because there's only so many buyers that are willing to pay at a cash price, and so it can adversely impact the value of properties in, if you're in that status.
Yeah, I, I guess I was with Nels in voting in favor because I think of the thirty-six people who own properties in that condition, and they can't rebuild, rebuild without a public, you know, hearing, and I, to me, that's, just puts them in a really precarious position, and, and it didn't seem like legislatively we could distinguish between them and the properties that were not developed, and also I think about the people who own the properties that are not developed, and they have no value basically if they're not allowed to develop, and they purchased them before, you know. And so it's, it seems like it does have to be kind of an umbrella situation. What, my, my big question was the, the legal challenge or not, or about the 2012 piece that I didn't really understand, it was sort of thrown at us in the middle of a public hearing, and I didn't really know what its implications were, and that was the, maybe one concern that I wanted to make sure that the city checked out to make sure we, but to me, it's, you know, I guess I would encourage people to buy a lot that they don't want to see developed.
Yeah.
You know, and, and make it a park, and that would be great, and, you know, pool together and buy the lot and make a park. But, but we aren't in that business, unfortunately, so I, I, as much as I empathize with the people who, you know, participated, I really felt that I had, you know, that the underrepresented the people who owned all the lots that are nonconforming.
Well, I don't see it as any...
Were here for some reason, and they should have been.
I don't see it as much different than those people who live on the edge of town, close to the area of impact, and as growth happens, I mean, oftentimes you have a ten or fifteen years to listening to the meadow larks in a wheat field, and then boom, it gets developed, and I...
Then one day you hear a backhoe.
If we can't develop on the, our undeveloped land, what are we supposed to do as, as a city? So for me, it just seems like it is a lot different than that issue of, of, okay, and we've been there many times with folks on the edge of the city who clearly don't want their life to change, but, and we appreciate that, and we, your heart goes out to them, but on the other hand, anybody who builds, lives on the edge of the city could be able to figure that out without a lot of, of an effort, to know that if the next subdivision, where could it possibly be on the edge of the city? And, and undeveloped lots are not dissimilar from, from that, too. But so it seems, I don't know, it seems kind of clear to me, again, like Wendy, I was just struggling with the, the legal discussion went right over my little head, I could hardly...
Well, you have to be able to read and think about it, it's not just the words just blank.
I sympathize with you. What I felt that evening was, here's a panel of volunteer citizens who are not land use lawyers, and we're confronted at the last moment with a multi-page legal argument. Our job is to recommend to this city council, having looked at things, and our job is to listen to advice of staff and see if it seems reasonable and prudent. At times, we've argued with staff, I can remember at least one where we didn't go along with the rezone, we threw out part of it. That's part of the, part of the give and take, but I think it's unfair to expect that you all are able to, on the fly, reason through a complex document like that and, and understand it, and so I appreciate that staff has taken more time now and looked at those arguments.
I believe I made a motion to...
I have a motion.
But I haven't heard a second.
I haven't heard a second either. I have a second. Before I call for a vote...
I need to have you repeat the motion, so I'm sure I know what I'm...
My, my motion was to approve the, the draft, which was in front of us at the public hearing two weeks ago.
Okay.
And send it on.
And send it on to city council. Before I call for a vote, there is a somewhat extraordinary thing has happened in the intervening two weeks, and we have a written commentary that has been sent to staff, and can you just tell us a little bit what that is, Bill? And then, and then we'll talk about the merits of...
So after the close of business yesterday, we received another four-page letter, so similar to the first. So I, you know, it's, the hearing's been closed, so testimony really is no longer really to be received. It, it kind of takes the form of rebuttal, and, you know, I don't want to be perceived as blocking information from getting to the commission, so I, you know, I advised Nils when, when we received it and asked how we wished to, to handle it, whether we wished to be admitted. Technically, under the code for a legislative hearing, you can provide written testimony up until the period of the close of comment has been determined by the body. I would generally say that's the end of the public hearing, and then the body goes into deliberation. The, the letter takes exception to staff's recommendation to the commission on three points. The first of which is the elimination of the street standard, and you may recall that there was an argument that somehow modifying the zoning requirement that a lot of public, lots of public street and accepting out just these previously approved thirty-six lots would somehow remove the street improvement standard requirements within the subdivision code. Staff does not agree with that. There are two in separate issues. We talked about the fact that you can have a corner lot that has two-hundred feet of frontage, you can have a flagpole lot that has twenty feet of frontage, or you can have a lot that doesn't affront a street, and generally the, the public improvement standard requirement is that you have to improve your frontage on the street. So if you don't have any frontage on that street, you don't have any legal obligation underneath the city code for those improvements. The, under Title V, there are sections one, five, B and E, that make reference to city and alley standards, and make reference to the city standard in construction drawings and specifications, and those are all the standards for the streets, and we have an alley standard, so if you're adjacent to an alley, that is essentially the standard that would apply. So, in our opinion, this does not essentially remove or eliminate a street development standard, it just, essentially, it accepts out the zoning standard for the requirement that that lot above a public street. But if you don't above a, if you don't above a public street, then there is not a obligation for you to improve your frontage because you don't have that frontage. So, you know, the assertion was the city approves the proposed amendment, no street standard will apply to any lot that does not butt a public street, and, you know, that's, that's correct because you're not abutting a public street. So, that was the first. The, the second one was the, the question of treatment of lots that have been developed versus lots that are undeveloped, and whether, I guess the, the comment here was that staff stated that the developed and undeveloped lots must be treated uniformly as a matter of law to avoid takings claims, and I don't think that's what staff said. Staff said that we felt similarly situated property should be treated in a similar fashion. I don't think we said that was, that was going to put it into a position of a takings claims if they're treated differently. We talked about what a takings is and the reduction of all in economic use of value of property, but, but that it was our recommendation that similarly situated property be treated similarly. And they cite several cases about nonconforming uses and the ability for nonconforming uses to continue, and, and we do understand that there are uses that have been established on the developed lots, and there are undeveloped lots where uses have not been established, and yes, you can treat those that have established a use differently than properties that have not established a use, they can't go back and retroactively try to gain, you know, if residential uses were allowed in water business, those that were developed with residential use were able to continue that. If, if the, if the zone is changed to not allow residence use in that district, somebody who has not developed a lot cannot go back and reclaim that same right. We recognize that. We're not talking about, we're talking about a residence use that's allowed in that zoning district today, and just because of the fact they don't meet the standard, they're denied an opportunity to develop the property. So, we do recognize that if you establish a use prior to a change of code, those, those uses can be treated differently from somebody who has not established a use prior to that change of code. Our opinion was, but if the properties are similarly situated, and they're in the same zoning district, and they have the same equivalent access, it was our recommendation that they be treated equally, and that obviously is not their position or not what they're advocating. So I just want to make sure it's clear that staff did not mislead you. I don't think that's what I said, but that's, that was the statement in the letter. And the last item was that we should just use, we should just use the sixty-five, twelve lane. And the last item was that we should just use, we should just use the 6512 language because that's what they'd like us to do, I guess is the last point. And so again, that's, those are really the three points that are covered and I'm happy to hand out copies.
So when I learned of this, I thought, hmm, does that mean we're going to take additional testimony? The room is, is empty. You know, I thought, well, if we start to listen to one piece of written testimony, then do we need to allow a range of other testimony that's sitting here in the room to come forward as well? Which seemed that that sent us down a path of opening a public hearing again, which we hadn't noticed. And so there seemed like there was a bunch of problems. But it seems that, that we have no one else here to speak and we have one document and Bill has assured me that he and the city attorney have had enough time to look at this document, which is another set of legal arguments. That my feeling is we ought to accept it into the record so that it moves forward to council and the, the experience is complete when it gets to council.
What, what does council do with this? Is this a hearing?
Council will have another hearing on it. So I mean, this, we're just providing recommendations to the council. The same parties will have the same opportunities, make the same arguments before the council and all of the informations we receive will go along with it in the record.
Yeah.
But it's just when we continue to get these at the last minute, you know, without the commission having a really good opportunity to review.
So, so could that just be submitted to the city council when the?
We would by default, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I would say that we shouldn't do anything with it and just let them resubmit it to the, to the city council when it comes up because it seems like we're on a kind of a sketchy area in terms of allowing extra testimony.
So I even hear you suggesting not accept it into the record now, but simply say they wish to introduce it into the record, they should introduce it.
That it came after the public hearing was closed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with that too.
It's starting to look, given the number of times we've discussed this, twice in this sort of a setting, a public hearing, and the manner in which they've presented things after the close of the public hearing, when nobody else is expecting to have any input and after the close of business yesterday, it's beginning to look more like a tactic than legitimate use of the process. So I, and I would, I would not like to report that. I would, I would not, I would like to discourage that by not accepting that into the, into the record.
Okay. And then could I briefly get something on the record before we vote?
Sure.
So we have these 36 lots out there with property owners who through no fault of their own are kind of in a blind. I think we do have to do something to address that. If it was just allowed to, we could jiggle things around so that lots without adequate street frontage can only have a single family residence on them. That sounds like that gets very complicated and gets us right into spot zoning and all kinds of very strange things like that. And then the last item, I think that made it make sense to me even for those, that there is no appreciable difference between a flagpole lot and the access to a lot of these lots. So I guess in the end, I end up thinking, we've got these 36 lots, we've got to do something to address the problem. I would like to thank the people that showed up. It's nice to have people come to, to an event for the planning and zoning, no matter what. But I guess I end up coming down that probably the original recommendation is the, the easiest way to deal with this. It's got to be dealt with somehow and.
So, and for the record, the chair on advice of the commission declines to accept the letter from Landec at all that was submitted recently and advises them to submit in an orderly fashion when this comes before the council. With that, we have a motion and a second. Thank you, Deb. Any last discussion before we vote on the second? All in favor of recommending to city council the proposed revision to Title Four, Chapter Six? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions. Looks ununanimous, Sam. Thank you all. Next up, the accessory dwelling unit survey. You may recall, we kind of set aside that work late in the spring and we asked staff to develop the survey and a mechanism to try to get us some more scientifically valid data. And this is our opportunity to review that instrument.
Thank you. So we had a copy, and this is very, very similar to the, the questionnaire that we utilized for the open house meetings that we conducted. What I'm passing around right now is we thought it would be helpful, obviously, because there's really no explanation. This, this was designed for attendees at the open house meeting or somebody who had visited the website and kind of got the background information about what an ADU is. And so we were going to provide a explanatory letter, cover letter with the survey instrument just to provide some background about what's being discussed and probably actually add a URL to the, for the webpage for the project so that the posters and displays from the open house meetings, if they wanted to learn more, they can go there. If they want to provide comments, they can provide us comments there as well. So we'll add a URL to this as well. But this was just kind of a draft that Mike put together this afternoon to go along with the survey instrument. The, the questionnaire is actually almost the exact same as the one that we asked, that we included in the open house meetings. One of the things that is different is item number G, which was a question about the overlay zone, whether ADU should be allowed by an overlay zone. We actually struck that. It seemed kind of overly complicated and most people probably aren't going to, may not understand or be familiar with that practice. So there's actually room possibly for one more question, should we identify one on that upper section? But we asked the questions again that we did on the citizen survey. The first two are the same as the citizen survey questions. Would you support allowing them in your neighborhood? And if they were allowed in your neighborhood, would you be interested in adding one to your property? So that was the same question that we ran in the 2012 citizen survey. And then C, D, E and F again are looking at how should they be permitted and where should they be permitted in different zoning districts? And then the item number two was kind of the scale of relative importance of the different development standards that may go along with an ADU. We then picked up on the backside just to help us maybe be able to correlate responses to different demographic groups. We pulled some of the demographic questions that generally run on the citizen survey on the back. So essentially the first would be what type of building do you reside or live in? Do you own or rent your home? How many people are in your household? Do you have any children under 17? Do you have any adult children? This is actually a different question, but the, the phenomena of adult children kind of moving back home or multi-generational housing, we actually added that question number seven. And question number eight, are you currently caring for parents that live in your household? Again, looking at the different scenarios of where ADUs may serve households. Or number nine, does a member of your household have any physical disability? It was, it was, we were curious to see whether we would see any correlation of interest or support for ADUs from folks that may be living in these situations where they have either family members they're caring for in the home or adult children that have moved back for a variety of reasons. We've asked for age, gender, and then mode, general mode of transportation to kind of look at the, possibly devise anything that may provide any additional input about parking standards or parking requirements. And then there's a general open comment, you know, any, any comments, general responses they wish to provide, they could provide on the backside as well. So that's kind of the, the draft of the instrument and I guess we're due to see what the commission thinks and if there's things you would like us to look at changing or modifying or adding. And our plan would be to try to get this out by the end of this, early October, so probably within the next week or so. We will be identifying the sample size, which is probably going to be right around that 400 mark for a random sample. And then we, we did think that we would code these to identify what citizen survey quadrant they're in and what zoning district they're in. That way we can actually correlate it, not, not to the individual property, but just so we can understand, oh, they're in the southwest in an R4 district or they're in the northeast in R1 and kind of be able to look at the differences in responses there as well. So we'll be working on that as well.
I suppose what jumped out at me was just in question 12, method of transportation you usually use for your longest distance of your commute to travel or work or school. There again, we kind of leave an out of a segment of folks that don't work or go to school. Right? And, and so, and then the other, so maybe we could just say what method of transportation you usually use?
We could certainly do that. This is just a question we run in the, in the citizen survey.
Okay. And then perhaps one of the choices could be bus or public transit?
Or, or you could include shopping in the list of items.
We just work school or other trips, I mean, or other.
Well, why do you have to specify? I mean, why can't it just say what method of transportation you usually use?
What difference does it make where you're going or what you're doing?
Yeah.
You're moving around.
Yeah.
If you're doing it just for fun.
Yeah.
Just gogging around.
Yeah, just traveling around for fun.
What was that?
What if it were?
It doesn't matter that it's within town. Are we talking about town travel as opposed to travel to Boise?
So I could see limiting.
Right, right. What method of transportation do you usually use within Moscow?
For local travel.
Yeah, that is reasonable.
True.
Okay, then the.
Lots of people commute to Poland.
So not being Moscow, so local travel gets a little trouble.
So I have a question about something as simple as number 11. Usually when you ask the question, you're trying to correlate something with something. What, what are you trying to find out with that? And if there isn't anything to find out, get rid of it because I think it's a little bit too long. In other words, what is your gender? Does this, how would the answer to that impact anything in correlating to anything? So I think maybe it's just a rootless question.
Good.
So, and I was just wondering, I, I like it, but I just wonder if it's a little bit long. I, you've written many of these and I don't know, the whole thing, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, this is short compared to the citizen survey. So citizen survey ends up as nine pages.
Right, right.
The, the one question, I mean, I don't know if it's a question of length because it's not going to, it's one checkbox and it's an easy question to answer. So as far as the impact to length, I don't think that question.
Right.
But, but I think the question of, of the, the value is, is certainly a valid one. Does it, does it matter? Do we think that there's going to be a substantial difference based upon gender of your opinion of ADUs? I asked Mike to kind of grab off some demographic questions and he must pull that one in. It's, that's just a matter of, you know, if there's really not that. Now, based upon age, so if you're, I think that might be more interesting to see.
Yeah, I agree that it's.
You know, younger generation versus older generations or multi-generations and there is very stratification of opinion and those.
People in age and place, they might be more inclined.
Yeah, gender probably doesn't really.
If, if there was a difference based on gender, I still don't know.
Oh, what you're doing. It would just be interesting.
I struggled with, you know, I could see reasons for all the questions except that one. I was like, what, what can we really find else?
Yeah. Well, I think the easiest is just to pull that one out. We can take that one out.
You've got a typo in your 12B there. It refers back to 29A and it's supposed to go back to 12A.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, Mike, it must be 29, this isn't survey, so you missed that.
Right, he just ripped it out.
Yeah.
And would you take, end up then taking off two or four on that one too then on B?
I think we'd, we'd use the same. If you can check my.
And if the, if there are children in your household, maybe we could just make one question out of that and it could be under 17 or over 18. I mean, you're asking for adult children?
Correct. Yeah, well, yeah, the ones for children under.
Are there children living in your house? Are they under 18 or over 18?
They could be both.
One question? I, I'm just saying we could make one question out of that.
Roll it together, but allow the, check all that apply.
Right.
I have young children, I have adult children.
That might be.
Well, and I guess there's a, there's a question is, what's the benefit? I mean, the, the adult children is actually kind of a, it's, it's, that does relate to the ADUs. I don't know about the children under 17.
I, I would agree. I don't really see what that contributes either.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
So maybe strike that one and keep the adult children in your house or R4.
Yeah, I was about to say, I've known some 16, 17 year olds. I wouldn't mind having an accessory dwelling.
Well, you could have children who are over 18 and they're, you don't consider them adults either.
Yeah. But I, I do think that one's, yeah, that's probably one of those situations where it doesn't really.
What if you asked, what if you asked a question and just asked about do any extended family members live? Is that what we're, is that what we're trying to get at is what, other than the nuclear family lives there?
I think there are, there are two, but they're probably the most predominant. Are you caring for any aging parents or are you caring for a family member with a disability? And kind of gauging the, the need response of those two. The adult children is probably not as significant of an issue. I think that's a, you know, that's been obviously a phenomenon, the recession and the lack of ability to get employment. That's probably not necessarily a long-term trend, but I do think the caring for an aging parent or someone with a disability is probably a, you know, population that would be served by having this opportunity. And so the adult children is one we just kind of threw in there. It may not be all that much value, but I do think it'd be interesting to, to understand the distinction between, you know, an elderly parent or somebody with a disability and kind of understanding the, the opinions of those two groups.
And why does it have to be qualified as physical? I mean, it might be an elderly person who's.
No, it doesn't have to be.
Has.
Yeah, it does not have to be.
Other, so I would take the word.
Yeah, just struck out, physical.
Yeah, a significant disability or something like that.
Yeah.
That makes me kind of wonder if a question about if you had an ADU, what, what, what kind of person might you think, you know, you would use this for?
Use it.
I mean, I, I'm not expressing it very well, but.
No, I understand whether, is it a rental or a family member? Is it, is it?
Yeah.
Uh huh, uh huh.
You know, that might be an interesting question.
What's the purpose? People may want one for different reasons.
Just asking straight up, what are you going to do with this?
Yeah.
If you, what, or what uses would you, how would we put that?
Yeah, no, I, I think we could certainly say, you know, if, if you were to add an ADU to your property, you know, who, who would reside within it? And you could say, you know, and we could provide the options of.
Wouldn't you be interested, yeah, use it for elder parents or?
Right.
That's a great idea.
Well, between.
I could eliminate. I'm for a library.
Yeah.
Right, because, because it doesn't matter who's living in your household. That's not why you wanted the ADU.
Haven't you been beautiful?
Yeah, why would you?
Oh, okay.
I think, I think very good to see how, you know, of those that indicated they're caring for aging parents, 80% of them would like to add an ADU to their property or 80% of them would support an ADU. But I do think it'd be kind of interesting just because it is a fairly easy checkbox question. It's not a multi-hor, it's not really hard. I would like to do that, but I think we could still fit in.
For what purpose would you?
Right. And we could probably, that's the other one, probably number five is another one that how many people live in your household? That's probably not as important as, you know, do you, are you caring for somebody? So we could probably, between the space we get in five and six, add that question in.
Rebecca's notion of that.
Yes.
Purpose for which ADU would.
Yep. And we probably would lead with it up top and shift those down.
Who would be the likely occupant of an ADU on your property? Elderly parents of this, this and this and that or other, I guess.
Yep, no, I think that would be.
Unrelated renter.
Right, right. And would we want to know? Are you looking at it for income or? I don't know if that would be a hard question.
I think it'd be helpful to understand. I mean, I think we're going to have to be clear that we're, if they're allowed, they're going to be allowed and it's not going to be restricted on the occupants, but, but to know where the demand's coming from.
Right.
You know, is it because of caring for parents or is it because of supplemental income to really better gauge that?
Yeah.
And see who, who will we be serving if this is made available?
Right.
And what benefit will come from it? Because 80% indicate they're, they would like to add one just because they've got a family member they'd like to care for.
Right.
Whatever the outcome is, I think it'd be a good, a good omission.
So there you, you could pick up the person with a disability, you could pick up the.
If it's going to be against the House, oh, sorry.
It could be the rental to some third party. It could even be the.
And what benefit will come from it? Because 80% indicate they would like to add one, just because they've got a family member they'd like to care for.
Right.
Whatever the outcome is, I think it'd be a good...
So there, you could pick up the person with a disability, you could pick up the...
If it's going to be against the house, oh, sorry.
It could be the rental to some third party. It could even be then...
Your in-laws.
It could be my mother, but I couldn't charge her rent.
A place for family members to stay when they come visiting.
I thought you'd charge your mom more.
Probably.
To work on that.
I think these have all been improvements to...
Purpose and income, I guess.
I think, may I be excused and try to run for my other meeting?
Sure.
The next thing all looked good to me.
Bill, I'll give you some, since I put my name on this letter. It was just a thought, I was trying to find a way to add something like, "The pictures below were used in the open houses and are included to give you an idea of possible appearance of a detached ADU." What are these here for?
Right, right. Sure.
Sample ADUs.
This one's attached, isn't it?
Right, maybe attached, but some little caption.
We might do a caption, example ADU, wellings or something like that.
Okay. So...
You can put it as a caption below the...
Not in the body.
Not, not hide it in the text.
Yeah, just trying to not have too much text. And we want to add the URL to the public page, we'll land that in there, not too much.
Okay. So, we've given some direction. Any last thoughts? We say, carry on and make it happen?
What do you see as the next step after that?
So if we're able to get out early October, we're going to allow probably 45 days for return. So we're going to be in the middle of November, so probably about Thanksgiving time, we'll have them back. We'll compile them, and we'll probably be in December to report the findings. And then, at that point, it'll be up to the Commission to say, we're ready to proceed, let's notice a hearing and go, based upon the info we've received. So that's my, or based on the input, no, we need to think about this, and talk about this a little bit more, and see where the support lies. So we'd be targeting early December, probably first meeting of December, since the second one tends to be canceled because of the holidays. So we're probably shooting for that first meeting in December to bring back a report of the results.
And what's the mailing list for this? Is this just...
It'll be randomly pulled samples, so we, just so happens, we're doing the citizen survey again, as we went over the last question at our last meeting before last. And so we have that mailing list, so we're going to pull a separate random sample. So we just, we actually just finished geocoding the list for the citizen survey, so we'll pull a separate sample from that mailing list of about 1,100 households in town. And, yeah, so we're targeting probably a sample size of about 400, and that was kind of balancing the cost versus the, you know, the accuracy of the results. And so that's probably the sample size we'll shoot for. And we'll get those out.
Great, thank you. I'll just give you that as a reminder of what you will do. So, we're up to, I've lost my agenda now. Draft, reviewing the draft commercial district residential allowance. I think this was an outgrowth of our conversations about North Main and motor business and allowing residential above and behind.
Correct. So this really started with the North Main discussion, followed up the Anytime Fitness, PUD approval for the project, and the desire to try to facilitate more residential use in a variety of the commercial districts today. So we went through all of the commercial districts through this process to review the allowances. The residential office is in the, in what we consider a commercial district, but the residential uses are already fairly extensive. So there's nothing in here for the R0 district, but we pick up with the neighborhood business, and then carry on through to the industrial district. Currently, in the neighborhood business, residential uses are allowed above, behind a ground-floor commercial use. And the only real change here was to allow them to be on the ground floor with a conditional use. And that's, again, looking at the, if you had a neighborhood business district, and you had one frontage that was appropriate for commercial, and residential happened to fall on the other side, or there was a side street in that district that would still be appropriate for residential on the ground floor, that there would be a path and a method to be able to provide that flexibility. And so, that is a new addition in the neighborhood business district. Currently, in the general business district, residential uses are only allowed as a conditionally permitted use. And so, we have inserted under item number 14, the same language we have in downtown in the UMC district, that residential uses, provided that any dwellings located on the ground floor are going to be located behind or above a commercial use, or should you not interrupt the commercial frontage. So, right now, GB, any residential use would be a condition use permit. So with this amendment, residential uses above a commercial use or behind a commercial use, not interrupting the commercial frontage would be a use by right. And ground-floor residential uses would be a conditionally permitted use, under item number D4. And again, same situation in motor business, residential uses above or behind a commercial use, so the Anytime Fitness situation, the Grange building that, you know, the individual's looking for, she's in the building, and interested in converting the upstairs residential uses. Right now, residential use is actually only allowed through a planned unit development, so that's how the Anytime Fitness project was processed. So residential uses above, behind would become a use by right in the motor business district, and anything on the ground floor would be a conditionally permitted, to allow an opportunity to review the potential loss of commercial frontage. And then in the industrial district, one other thing that does change in the motor business district, we have, the only other location in MB that residential uses are identified as being permitted accessory uses and structures is one dwelling attached or detached when such dwelling is customarily incident to the principal use and locate on the same lot. We talked about a dwelling within a motel, hotel, as a example of that use, because it would be allowed if they're kind of behind or above the commercial use. We didn't feel that was necessary any longer, so we just struck that section. Industrial has kind of the same, same situation. The, right now, residential uses are allowed as only a conditionally permitted use in the industrial zone, a dwelling for a caretaker or watchman employed on the premise, which was under D1 before. We've had a number of situations where somebody wants a dwelling, it's a contractor shop, they may have an office in other locations, and they may want to sleep onsite, or they may have a caretaker, they may have a watchman. And we found that pretty much anybody can somehow come up with a need for a caretaker or a watchman, as some man or another. So the, rather than really splitting that hair, let's make it right by use for them to have one dwelling unit where it's accessory to a permitted principal use. We don't necessarily want a residential lot where somebody drops a house in the middle of it, but where it's accessory to a permitted use. So we'd make that as a one dwelling, as permitted accessory, and then we would strike the condition use for the dwelling or caretaker, because that'd be a by-right use now. So that's pretty much it. It's actually fairly simple, but it's going into virtually all of our commercial districts in a saying, vertically mixed, you know, residential above or behind, all by right. And in a few commercial districts, we still want to review it if it's going to be on the ground floor in that district, because we want to kind of, we do want to protect the commercial opportunity and commercial frontage. But otherwise, it would be greatly expanding the opportunity for residential uses, and we're just seeing more and more desires to have that opportunity.
I think I have some questions.
Does parking become a part of it?
They have to provide the parking for the dwelling unit.
So my questions would be, first, when we say above and behind, it wouldn't preclude having a door and a flight of stairs or something that would be, that wouldn't be interrupting the commercial frontage?
Correct.
Okay. And then the second is, in, is it clear that if you are going to have a ground-floor one, if you're going to get a condition use for that, it's our intention that it not be on the prime commercial side? I mean, you gave us an example, like a corner lot, that somehow that we're communicating to the Board of Adjustment, that, no, you wouldn't be able to do it straight ahead on Main Street, you would do it on the side street?
I think we could probably add some language that would discuss the considerations in reviewing the allowance of residential uses on the ground floor, you know, as a frontage, and provide some guidance of what we're looking at, and why it's going to be conditionally permitted use, and what should they be reviewing.
Because my reaction is, we have a number of places where R0 got created. Seemed like it could be an interesting, small-scale commercial opportunity, and it's all built out in R4 style. And the opportunity got lost.
Right.
Maybe that's okay there, but I don't think we want to go further down that path here.
Well, if a developer came to town and wanted, or somebody here wanted to develop live-work units, for example, like you have an Arco station or other new urbanous developments, where would you steer them to go with them?
In this case, after here, it could go anywhere.
Okay, that's what I wanted to...
There's R4, obviously. R4 allows for professional office, so it depends upon the nature of their operation. If it's a professional office, a graphic design studio, a architect's office, an engineer's office, they can go anywhere in R4, they can go anywhere in residential office, they can go anywhere in neighborhood business today, they can go anywhere in central business. They could not go GB without a CUP, they could not go in motor business without a PUD, which we really wouldn't do unless it was a large-scale project. And they could not go industrial currently. So, you know, the ones that do it, R4, R0, and then those other commercials that I named, this would mean it could be anywhere.
Because even in R1, one can have a home office, I mean, the nature of it there would be the most subdued.
Right, yeah, that would be a home occupation. In our single, two fam, in single and two-family districts, that would be where we consider a home occupation, but that's no onsite customer service really, and no employees coming to the site. But as you get into R4, and the R0, and into the commercial districts, then that would be allowed essentially in any of those, so.
It seems to make it more small-scale, business-friendly in sort of live-work contexts.
The arrays that I've seen them in are normally like, almost like townhouses with a storefront kind of presence, and a stair going up to a unit right above it, you know, like a two-story, two to three-story unit above it.
So, direction to staff is, carry on, notice this, and bring it forward?
I think so.
Okay. So I was going to make a motion, or...
What's that?
Oh, no. I just wondered if we had to make a motion.
Well, that would be great, if you'd like to make a motion and direct staff to notice if we're hearing, then.
Did you just make that motion? Second from Gregory. All in favor of directing staff to bring this forward? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed?
So that'll be our second meeting in October. So that'll be the 22nd.
Any other business that we have to consider? Thank you all.
Thank you.